Order for April 22nd. At 5:05, we'll call the meeting to order. And just, just a couple of ground rules here. If you are not a board member or part of the administrative team, please make sure that your audio is muted, which I see it looks like it is. And cello is not muted. So yours. And then also do not turn your, or do not join the conference with the video on. Your video should be off. That, did I get, was that what you wanted me to say, Jeff?
Yeah, I think that's, yep.
Okay. And the meeting audio will be available on our website. And you can, people can listen in on that. If there are any comments that the public would like to make, the best way, the only way is to send those directly to our superintendent. And he will convey those messages to us at our following board meeting, which is actually scheduled for next Monday. Okay. So with that, um, we have, yep. Is there some? All set. But with that, we'll move on to the approval of our minutes from April 6th. So maybe like to make a motion on that, Jamie?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the board and meeting of April 6th.
Okay.
I'll second Candace.
Okay, good, very good. Any corrections, modifications to those minutes? Are you good with them? Okay. So as we've done in the past, I've got a little list here of our names. And I'll just call out the names just to make sure we got everybody's forecasted. So with that, Candace?
Aye.
Okay, Barry?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Bill? Okay, I got it. That's on wave. Eric?
Aye.
Kate? John?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And Tim also says aye. So that's good. Bill, where, did you join the meeting? Are you?
I'm sorry.
Were you at the, were you on the Zoom meeting for the April 6th meeting?
On? Yeah, I was in the, the, the last meeting. Not that Monday meeting, but the first time we, the first time we did one of these, I believe so.
Yep, I think you were, yeah. And Jill, you were there too, weren't you? Jill Karini, you're on mute.
Yes, I was, sorry.
I remember seeing Jill too.
Okay, okay. The, I mean, just fix the minutes. Cause I think they were both marked as abstained. Or they weren't there. All right, so we'll move on. Let's see. We did not have a select representative that we gave. We told the students that we would like them to come to our next meeting on Monday. So we don't have that. So we'll move right into our discussion action for the evening. And the first one that's up is the discussion and for possible actions is the grading assessment, which I know that the administrative team has worked quite diligently on. And Jeff, I'll turn it over to you for comments.
Thanks, Tim. Hope everybody's doing well. Yes, so want to recognize we've got our high school administrative team as well as Mr. Bickgood is out there. Thanks for joining us. We've had a lot of discussion and a lot of work around, you know, grading and, you know, how this is going to play out. So we're going to, I'm just in a couple of opening remarks. And then Amy's going to give some grading and assessment overview in the document, the larger document that is in Board Docs. And then our high school team is going to chime in as well. They have kind of narrowed down and bulleted out some important pieces they plan to use, you know, with parents. The most important component in everything that we thought about and looked at with grading, to me was, you know, twofold. Number one, that we are working to kind of follow and make sure we're aligned with, you know, the State Department of Education, as well as, you know, we looked at, you know, post-secondary institutions, colleges, et cetera, and the things that they were doing. And I don't think it would be wise at this juncture, you know, to be deviating, you know, from what the State Department is recommending, especially in light of, we don't know what next year will entail. And if we are out for an extended period next year. Trying to stay focused right now and make this as easy as possible for kids and not penalize kids is, is a big component. That leads to my second point. It's the fact that, you know, there are a handful of students out there in, you know, high school, middle school, you name it, where, you know, you've got families that are living in hotels. You've got, I heard of a family today that, you know, two families are living together with 11 people, you know, in, in the house. And to try and engage kids and grade them and hold them accountable in a time like this where they're at home and we have no idea, you know, what access they have at any given point in the day, I think would be a disservice, you know, to our students. So really trying to focus on, you know, not harming our kids, but helping them through this to make sure that, you know, we get to the end of the year and we see that, you know, every one of them, you know, engages in some capacity moving forward. So I just wanted to start with those two major points. And I'm going to turn it over to Amy. She's going to kind of hit upon, hopefully had a chance to look at the document sometime today, but she's going to hit upon some of the components of a fuller breakdown that we did. And our high school administration can chime in as well as to some of the work that they did, because they spent a lot of time working with their team members as well on a lot of this. So Amy, I'm going to turn it over to you for that. And then we'll turn it over to high school.
Okay, hello, everyone. So I just want to quickly talk to you about the structure of the document that I uploaded. So if you think about it, the intended audience for the document is parents. The first page really should read as almost the content of the, of the letter we would send to parents with rationales for the change in grading. We are proposing a universal pass fail grading policy for the spring grading marking period, which would mean from March 16th to June 19th. As some of you remember, we had a PD day on March 13th. So technically our students were in on the, or their last day was on the 12th. One of the things on the first page I just want to draw your attention to is as Jeff referenced, you know, we're using the guidance from the State Department as well as universities. But also, we wanted to be really clear with parents that we've had to make adjustments to the grading windows for even possibly second trimester or third quarter for the high school or first semester for the elementaries, which is where you see that chart there. So parents are aware that we needed to change some of those dates so that we could actually make a spring marking period. I'm using the term spring marking period because each of our levels grades in different segments. So our elementary grades really in semesters, they only provide two grades throughout the year because the rest of the time they're conferencing with parents. Our middle school functions in a trimester schedule, whereas our high school is in a quarter schedule. So it's not like I could tell everyone the spring quarter is pass fail. I really had to sort of name it globally, spring marking period and encapsulate the semester, the trimester and the quarter. So the first page is meant to read really, like I said, is just basically telling parents that we are universally, we'll be using a pass fail grading system for the term effective March 16th to June 19th. Within that letter is going to be a live link to the next two pages. So I don't want you to think that the parents would be receiving a three-page letter. They would only be receiving a one-page letter with, with some additions, of course, and wordsmithing here and there. But the second and third page is really meant to sort of be clear around, then what's our expectations? If we have pass fail, what does that mean? What does that mean for students? So we wanted to start off and address, you know, what are the goals of the continued educational opportunities that we've been providing to your students on a cycle basis? And those are the same goals I've been sharing with parents in my communication, but we thought it was good to bring those forward. The other is we wanted to define for parents essential learning so that we could really be clear that really we're talking about sort of student engagement and cognitive engagement over time. And we're talking about a demonstration of knowledge and skills as they align to the standards. That's sort of how we're defining them at the moment. And then what we're trying to do for parents is just be, I think what we're trying to do is in a stressful, intense time, how do we provide clarity and just really clear communication around what our expectations are? So that's where the nice little simple chart comes in. So we are basically saying pass, you receive credit. Fail is no credit. And we've tried to define that really it's a demonstration of evidence of essential learning through engagement that gets you the pass, whereas a fail is the student does not engage. And there is no evidence that they have gained any level of essential learning throughout the time that we've been administering continued educational opportunities. On the last page, I get a little bit further into going into the criteria. You'll notice the real focus for us, like I say, the key terms are for grading right now is the amount of engagement that we're seeing from students and the evidence that we have. So really more of like an artifact-based assessment. Not so much that sort of 84, you know, 92 type grading scale that some of our students are used to. And then the other thing we wanted to point out is the extenuating circumstances that we also understand that there's, as Jeff mentioned, individual cases of families we are already trying to readily work with as well as students and get them engaged. But we want parents to know that we understand your individual needs and we want to partner with you obviously during this time. And our goal as anything is to get your child to have educational success and meet those graduation requirements. We want them crossing that stage as much as, as they do. And I think one of the things I tried to do is create a visual for parents because I think one of the things we've heard and even in some of the parent survey comments was, you know, but what's the motivator for my child right now? If you're not providing grades, you know? And, and I think that's what's led us to, well, you know, what is a pass and what is a fail? And by getting that pass, what does that mean? And I think one of the things that we've reached consensus on is right now it's really about credit. And it's about the fact that started by you earning a pass, you have earned the credit for that course and for that level of work that you've done. And then it's in combination with them actually engaging and learning. And together, the result is really right now is about credit. And it's about a level of learning through the continued of educational opportunities. So I tried to create a little bit of a visual for parents so they could sort of see what the end game is. And then obviously I instilled sort of the mission statement because I think that's one of the conversations we had is we want to continue to keep parents abreast in the promise that we have in that mission to fulfill through our grading system. And in talking with administration further, and one of the conversations we had is this is sort of the global message that we'd like to provide to parents so that they know how it is that we're grading. And then one of the things we thought is that the building-based administration is communicating out to parents every Friday right now. So what would happen is after this went out or tweaks or whatever your feedback is tonight to parents, then the building-based principals would follow up with some building-specific practices that they know are relevant to their population and speak and give parents more details as it relates to that, which is why Jeff had asked Mike and Henry and Deb and Dave to be on the call this evening so that you could also hear from Mike. And so sort of some high school specific, because obviously we understand that's where the crux of the grading, you know, if you will, that's where it sort of meets the road as far as that's concerned. Because we don't want students being impacted. So I, before I take questions, I'm going to pass it over to Mike and then we'll do holistic questions. Is that okay, Jeff and Tim for process? Yeah, okay. So Mike, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you. And maybe you can give the board some high school specific guidance.
Sure. So we've met a few times as a leadership team at the high school and really thought this through as far as different angles. Our main mission in looking at third and fourth quarter is really to do no harm. So we're trying to look at the, the students for the second half of the year, support them academically and put things in place that, that don't set them up for failure or put them in a difficult position. So under that premise, we investigate a lot of different ways to approach this. We would start down one road and realize, Jesus, there's so many moving parts, you know? Maybe this isn't the right way to go. Then we would switch to a different path. And we would go down that path and see if, if this would be a better option for students. Ultimately, we landed on the process of a third quarter. Giving them the grades they have, giving them the opportunity to make up any grades that they've missed. We're not going to hold any missed assignments against them. So if they have missed assignments right now that are zeros in the gray book, we're just taking them out. And then when we were talking about all these different ways to support students and look at the grades, we kept coming back to fairness and equity. So we have students that are high flyers, you know, the AP students, students that get straight A's across the board. And then we have students on our lower level classes that might struggle with the day-to-day assignments just at school, never mind being at home. So we were trying to figure out, how do we service this wide range of student needs? And what we came up with was, again, not holding them, not holding against them the missed assignments. And then for fairness part across the board, we are recommending a 10% addition to their third quarter grade. So if they have an 80 right now in third quarter, they receive an 88 for their third quarter grade. If they have a 70, they would have a 77. If they have missing assignments and they want to turn those assignments in, they still have the opportunity until I believe we said May 1st. And then once we move into the last quarter of the year, we're looking at a pass fail scenario. Now with the, the, the fail part, just to get a little specific with it, we, we don't expect that students are going to fail. This comes down to an engagement piece. We want them to engage in the learning opportunities that we're providing. The first week or so, we asked the teachers to give us names of students who aren't engaging. And then we actively sought them out to figure out why they're not engaging and then support them so we can get them engaged, whether it's technology, whether it's just understanding how to navigate certain things, or, or maybe it is scenarios at home. So we're trying to support those individual families. So we're on top of the engagement part. If we do get to the end of the, the fourth quarter and students aren't engaging, we have it listed as fail. But to be honest with you, we'll still work with them to try and give them potentially an incomplete and then support them to get them to get their work in so they can get credit. If they, they do absolutely nothing and it's a second semester class, we talked about as a leadership team to, instead of failing them for that opportunity, that we would have them withdraw that class from their transcript. So they would have to redo that class at a later date or not get credit for it. So the leadership team, the admin team and the CIOs, I think that outstanding job looking at this from every angle possible. There's no perfect scenario for every single student. But this, this recommendation really hits a lot of the high points. It doesn't do any harm to students. It supports them. And then for those few individuals that we need to support from a standpoint of like a team approach, supporting them to help them to get engaged, we will continue to do that like we would if we were in school. So that's the overview of our recommendation.
Just one additional key point in all of this too is this is for, you know, the rest of this year until June 19th. And we'll talk more about it when we talk about the budget and a couple of slides that we'll look at then. But, you know, the CDC had made some recommendations or, you know, there's information that came out, I should call them recommendations, the information that came out this morning that, you know, there could be a significant flare up, you know, next year in the winter. If we're out for an extended period of time next year, we really need to, are going to need to take another look at, you know, how we're grading because we're not going to be able to continue to just keep doing pass fail. So between now and, you know, the start of the next school year, we're going to continue to do some work as to, you know, get hot. And this ties in again with budget and tech news of technology, needing technology. How are we going to get to a, you know, a specific grading platform? But in high school, you know, Mike, they, they did a lot of work on this and make a lot of really good points and trying to be equal and fair across the domains, you know, for all kids. That's an important component because we just don't know what all kids are dealing with at home. Many or some, I should say, you know, have COVID-related deaths or family members that are sick. And what impact is that having? So we tried to be as fair and equitable. And I think Mike uses a good term and, you know, not trying, not harming kids, you know, through this, but supporting and helping. But we will need to turn the page, you know, as we look at next year.
Very good. Um, so any, any, any questions for either Amy or Mike? Barry raised his hand. Okay, and then Kate and then Bill. Okay, so Barry?
First, kudos on a very good job on this. I think you guys put a very comprehensive package together. And prior to this, I did a lot of reading and background on this whole issue of best way to do this. I won't go through all that, but I just do want to, I think Amy brought up a very good point before that the emphasis here is on credit, no credit. And I think that in terms of other practices and moving forward, that we could best communicate the intent of this by referring to this as a credit, no credit, not a pass fail option. I would, I would strike the words pass, I would strike the words fail and I would just go with this as a credit, no credit option. And there are many schools that have done this with much success by dropping pass fail and just go to credit, no credit.
Good suggestion.
Jeff, can I respond to that or?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, let's hope has some open dialogue because I have a few thoughts on that as well.
Okay, so we had talked about that. We talked about specifically the language to use, whether we were going to use some type of mastery-based or credit-based. Our, our concern is that if we put it out there that without the pass fail designation, we'll have students drop out or disengage if they don't need the class. So particularly seniors that don't need the credits and don't need the class, we won't hear from them again in those, in those classes. We already have students that are dropping out because they know that there's no consequence for withdrawing right now. For example, because Yukon, Yukon's one of our examples where there's no consequence for withdrawing right now. So our, one of our concerns is that if we don't have strong language there, then, and there's no motivation for students to stay engaged, they just won't engage. They'll do the bare minimum what they need to. I mean, we've heard from parents that are saying, how, when are you going to start grading? Because I can't get my student engaged, my child engaged. And they point blank will say to them, why, why do I need to do this? It doesn't count for anything. They're not grading anything. So these are parents reaching out to us saying that they're asking us for help for more, more of a hook or something to engage their, their child. So that's why we use that language. Ultimately, you're right, it comes down to credit, no credit. That's what, that would be the end product. But we have to be very conscientious of motivating factors and things that unmotivate students or present a scenario where they'll work the system and then won't be engaged. So that's, that was our thought behind that.
And I think we're getting to the, both, whether you do credit, no credit or pass fail, we're getting to the same endpoint of getting kids the credits that, you know, that, that they need. I, I would be leery of deviating away from the State Department of Education language as well. I think it's important to try and remain aligned with it. They're calling it pass fail. I would have difficulty stepping away from it, calling it something different from that. I mean, it's basically the same thing, but I would want to stick with the same language. Eric, did you have a question?
Let me just, let me just say that if, does anybody have a comment that they'd like to make specifically related to this, this topic that we're discussing right now? I mean, in terms of the, the language for, for calling this. Elsewise, I'll move on to Kate.
I'm fine with the language. And again, kudos to Mike and Amy, you guys are doing a great job. I'm wondering if, how you feel it's going to affect graduation rates? I would hope that we could maintain the same level of graduates that we thought we had pre-March 17th. And just wondering how teachers and parents are, I know if you're a parent and your child is kind of shutting the door on it, is there any way that we could help them at all? I guess those are my questions and comments. Like kudos again, you guys are doing a great job.
Thanks, Kate. Thanks, Kate, I appreciate that. And it's really been a team effort. You know, we meet as a leadership team a couple of times a week, every week. And we really hammer through this to look at it from all different angles. So it's been a, a group effort. So certainly I'm pretty proud of the high school folks. So as far as the graduation rates, I, I think we'll be as good, if not in better shape. Because of the system that we're putting in place, we're not putting students in overly challenging or stressful situations where they might be home without the resources or the support or the, the appropriate learning environment and feel like that they won't, they can't meet our needs or expectations. So we feel that we'll be in good shape when it comes to the end of the year. Couple, couple of weeks out, if we're not back in school, we're going to be on top of students that aren't engaging. And like we would, if we're in school, we'll have a group of professionals that are going to get together and talk about how can we support these students? What do we need to do? Do we need to do something different? Do they need more support? Do we need to engage our social worker, our school counselors, our case managers? That's the type of conversation we'll have for those students that might be in danger of not getting credit. But that's going to be a really, really small number when you look at the totality of the high school.
Okay.
Bill?
First off, Mike and the rest of the team, I think you guys are right on. I like your comment, do no harm or try to do no harm. You know, to both ends of the spectrum, you've got, you got, you, you got kids who are, who are struggling that, you know, this is really challenging for them. And then you've got kids who are trying to make their junior year or their senior year or whatever it is and make it all polish it up. And, and that's the same thing. I mean, I've got it, I've got a junior I'm dealing with right now and we're looking to next year. And how do we, how do we make, you know, how does he differentiate himself from the rest of the folks that are in this, this situation? I, I will say that we did a similar thing at Old Lime where we, you know, kind of scratched missing assignments or gave kids the opportunity to, to make them up if they wanted to, to, to try to get that last ditch effort in for the third quarter. And I think that's a great way to go. Just to make sure I understood you correctly, across the board, there's going to be kind of a 10% boost based on the, the, the lost opportunity of the three weeks that didn't happen for that quarter. Was that the intent of, of that piece where all teachers are going to multiply by 1.1 instead of what are to, to, to cover that? That, that sounds like a, a good way to go because some kids kind of put it on, put on the efforts at the end. As far as current and, and your terms for pass fail, as you know, I'm doing distance learning, what feels like 24/7 these days. And I have been putting, we have been putting grades in. And I, I didn't the first two weeks. And when I started putting in, you know, zeros for missing assignments, all of a sudden, there was a significant jump in, you know, communication with parents and kids. You know, can I make that up? And, you know, when they didn't see anything in the grade book, even though there were assignments posted in our learning management system, they didn't, they didn't do much about it. And when they saw that it was potentially going to impact them now, we're, we're probably going to be having the same conversation with the pass fail. I'm quite certain that we're going to be going that well. But still a zero versus a pass is, is a potential motivator as well. So again, I think you're, you're doing the right thing. And it's difficult because some of the kids have already done the math and know that they, they can pass my class even if they got a zero for the, you know, or minimal effort or whatever it is for them. So it's tough to get those kids to engage.
Good, good.
If I could just add one more thing to that. Bill, the, one of the factors, a huge motivator for our students to engage, which this kind of came up during our CIO meeting, was even if the students don't have grades, the underclassmen, so the freshmen, sophomore and juniors, they're going to be looking to their teachers for rest. and juniors, they're going to be looking to their teachers for recommendations, for college recommendations and for National Honor Society and that kind of stuff. So teachers are encouraging students to continue to engage. And they know that that's something that they're going to need down the road. So that has been one thing that I didn't realize would be a good motivator for our students.
That's the conversation I've had with all of my students and with my son in that what's going to separate you from anyone else now is going to be that recommendation. And it's going to happen because of what you did during this time versus what somebody else did. So I agree 100%.
Okay, good. Very good. Eric, did you want to get something in here?
Yeah, thanks. I had a few thoughts. So first, thanks for pulling this together. And I really liked the idea of creating a third quarter. And it didn't, we got most of the way through it, but not all the way through. But it's probably enough data. So I thought that was really good. You know, you guys are closer than I am on how the grading goes. The 10% sounds like a lot to me. You know, someone who has a 79, which is a C+, ends up with a B+. That, that sounds like a lot, given that nothing happened. You know, we cut the, the date as the date when, before things were really happening and getting crazy here. So it seems like, that would seem like a big boost for people. It's more than I, you know, I, I, I was just thinking you'd take, here's what you have. And this is what, you guys are close to it. Bill, you know, obviously is, is close to it as well, you know, for the teachers. So I guess it just seems like a lot to me. It just seems like a lot.
So I'm happy to address it because we did talk about that, trying to figure out, do we do a percentage? Do we do a set number? Do it like, how do we approach that? And Eric, it's not just those who, we have a lot of students that hold out towards the end of a quarter. And when they know that, that grades are going to be submitted and the quarter is going to be closed, all of a sudden, they get their work in or they, they turn it on. Or a lot of times, teachers will have more assignments towards the end of the quarter. So they'll have more opportunities to get more grades, to raise their grades up. All that was taken from them. So from the teacher's perspective, they felt that that was a, a significant loss to the students because of those things. So that's why we went with the, the 10%. And if you think about the students that are the B-level students or special education students or 504 students that need extra support, they don't really have any of that stuff. So we felt that 10% across the board, again, that fairness piece for all parties. That's what, that's why we came up with that number. But we did, we did drill down on that.
Okay. So, so thank you. And, and it, I'm still, you know, I, I, I get you because I kind of, I remember the end of the quarters having a lot of work. And that is, you're right, there is a uptick, not only in effort, but it's the amount of work that you have that gets, goes into the quarters. They are missing that. So there's probably something there. My, just my other quick points. And you addressed most of it. The pass fail, my concern with pass fail is to motivate even, even your best and brightest, even your most motivated students. The weather gets nice. I just have to pass fail. I already have an A, A+, you know, I'm doing really well already. I can kind of just mail it in, right? I can just show up. I'm smart enough. I'll pass my, I'm going to do enough work to not fail, but I have to pass. I do like that the, you know, and maybe we need to market it a bit more, not only about having the references, but you know, now's the time where you, you show up. Like, it's like, this is your charact, it's character building, right? It's like, what's in you? And you want to learn. I don't know how to do that. So I'm not a marketing person. But it does seem like for the students, it's not about, you know, passing and failing. It's like, hey, this is unprecedented time. This is a time you want to learn, you need to learn. And this is really important. So forget about the grade, just, just the, the want to learn. So there's something around that. And I like the reference part. And the more we can do to get people to just inherently want to learn, that's even, that would be even a great outcome. And forget about grades and more about the learning part. The only other point I wanted to make while I have the floor, and I don't know if you guys considered, because I did see, I don't know that I'm even in favor, but I do know some colleges did two things. You could, you have the option of pass fail or grade. And then the other that colleges did is you have the option of only going up. Or maybe it was high school. I heard that, maybe that was a high school thing. You can't go down. You can only go up. But you have that chance in the fourth quarter to work hard and pick up your grade. So there's like some motivation. I just want to know, did you consider that? I don't know that those are the right answers either. I just want to make sure that, you know, you guys talked that through.
Yeah. So I, I can talk, I can talk, Mike, to the opt-in in regards to other high schools. Because Eric, I did a lot of reading on the states that are ahead of us, weeks ahead of us who have been dealing with this. So like Washington and Oregon and California, like, and watching how their districts have rolled it out. And one of the things that I saw in the opt-in and one of the, some of the reading that I did was around the fact that it's another decision we're asking parents to make in a really difficult time. And so some advocacy groups have gotten involved in some of the states around that opt-in. And the other is, you know, in our board policy, grading is really up to us as a board to decide how it is and how we place value on it. So then you're, so in some states, I heard, you know, you're almost putting parents in the driver's seat to a board-based policy as to how we grade. And is that something that in the current landscape? So I did certainly look at multiple states in regards to that opt-in. So I can speak to that. And then, Mike, I don't know if you want to speak to the other part.
Yeah. So Eric, to answer your question, yes, we did talk about that, actually, that, that, that example specifically, as far as the grades versus pass fail, we ended up going away from that. Because once we started going down that road and really pulling that apart, it created more problems for us than we anticipated, which is why we ended up to where, I mean, it sounded, it had some good parts to it. But again, once, once you really drill down, there's so many variables that we, we really couldn't address for an equity and fairness standpoint. The other piece too is, just to address some of the other questions, we're talking about the high school right now, but the, the policies that we're talking about are K-12. So how we're going about some of this, and we're trying to keep in mind the district's perspective, as well as what we need to do at the high school. So we're taking that into consideration as well.
Right. Thank you. Candace, I see that your cell phone is not on mute. Did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
Well, I was going to ask a question. And, and I want to thank everybody for the work that they've done. I appreciate that. I think that it's really imperative that we take into consideration all the different family dynamics and what children are going through right now. So to incorporate the pass and fail system, I think is smart. I'm going to pass along a question that was actually asked of me. As far as seniors that are college-bound, would a college look at, how would a college view a pass and fail system? Is that something they would look, you know, if it were between two different students, maybe one from one other district that didn't have a pass fail system and something else? Would that be something that would hinder a student being accepted or not? I just, I don't know. And it was brought to me, so I wanted to pass that along. And C, I think that, you know, there's a lot of questions for people in general on grading. So clearly, with seniors heading to colleges, that's one question, you know, our, our college is going to look at children and students differently, dependent upon a system like this versus another. The letdown. So say we do pass and fail for however long this goes on, and then we go back to the way that we grade. How's that going to look for our students that have been graded a certain way and now are going to have this even larger expectation? So I think that that is something that we have to look at too. I don't think that there's really a right or wrong answer. I know that we're all just trying to get through. But those are two of the things that I wanted to just pass along and ask.
Yeah. Thanks, Candace. And both, you know, good points. I think as we look, we can't continue, you know, as we look at, and I mentioned earlier, next year to, to do, you know, the pass fail option. And we will have to, if we're out for an extended period of time, we're going to have to figure out, you know, grading of, of some, some, in some manner. So that, that's going to be something we're going to have to do some, some work on. Definitely. You know, we're trying to follow along with what the colleges are, are doing and recommending as well. So, you know, we don't do something different that's going to impact, you know, a, a junior now is going to see your next year or a senior now going on to college. So that's a key, a key component. Do no harm, again, is, is very important for any kids going into college. It's not impacting, you know, that opportunity when they get there or for grades or getting in.
Good.
Right.
Good. Very good. Jamie and then Eric.
So again, I'm going to echo what everyone else is saying on, thank you so much for getting this done. I know it couldn't have been easy. And I know a lot of hard work went into it. I like that the parent letter is going to put in the part about colleges accepting the pass fail. And, you know, basically saying that we understand this is, is a precedent in time. And we realize that not every kid has equal access and that we're going to do the pass fail option. I like that you've put that part in there. I mean, speaking on from my own house, I mean, I have two unmotivated, I have a middle schooler and a high schooler that really are not motivated to get up and do schoolwork every day. I'm making them do it, but it, it's tough because they're not getting graded. They are just getting the pass fail. They're not happy about it, but I'm making them do it. My kindergartner, on the other hand, loves school. He's having a great time with all her assignments. But I mean, it's something that we have to do. I get it. It would be nice if we could do grades. But like, again, we go back to the whole do no harm and make sure that every kid's getting the same learning experience. And they're not. I mean, I can't help my kids with their physics and their algebra. I have, I don't remember how to do it. And there's, I can't help. So I'm not exactly the best teacher to be helping them with chemistry or anything else. So I, I get that we're doing it. And I'm happy that we're doing it because it is, it's, it's an unequal education. It's trying times for everybody. So I thank you for doing it. I like it. And I'm glad that you put that part in there about colleges, because I know a lot of parents are going to be worried about their kids going to college next year, applying for colleges next year, and the like, and getting everything done. So I like it. And thank you for all your hard work.
Very good. Eric, you wanted to get something, another point in, and then Barry?
Yeah, I just want to get a clarification. So if, if a student has first quarter A, second quarter A, third quarter A, fourth quarter P, well, on their transcript, it's going to say A, right? It's not going to say pass or fail. It's going to say A, right? So from a college perspective, they're just going to see A. The only nuance that we have is that the fourth quarter is not a grade, but the colleges won't, maybe they get, I don't think they get quarter grades. I think they only get final grades. So they, they wouldn't necessarily see it. The only place where that would come in is in those semester classes where there's a pass fail element. But I don't know what we do with, there's just not enough data. I think you're, I don't know, I don't have any other suggestion than going pass fail for those anyway. I think that's probably just the right answer. So I saw shake nodding heads. So thank you.
Good. Barry?
Yeah, very long conversation. I could come around all this. But the thing that always concerns me as I look at the district is that in terms of the growth index, we only about 63% of our students on the average are making the, the growth index that they're, that's being set for them. And I keep thinking like, so how are we going to address that? What are we going to do about that? And I look at the idea now, this forced experiment we, we're in as a grand, grand opportunity almost to really try out some new and different things to improve student learning. And when we get to the discussions of motivation, I keep hearing that with the term motivation, with an understanding that it's basically a five level term. It's highly nuanced. There are, it's a whole continuum of issues from a term called extrinsic motivation into internal, how it's internalized down to intrinsic motivation, and then basically jump over the hedge into self-determination. And I know the research on grading basically accentuates external motivation, decreases intrinsic motivation, and dampens self-determination. So I kind of keep thinking all that stuff together and see the opportunity we have for us with the past grid, past fail or options out there. And the idea that you keep saying that, you know, one of the concerns that there are students that aren't engaged in this. One line of research on it is we have the opportunity to start getting students involved in self-assessing their own work. And in cases where we have grading set up that the teacher determines a sign and gives a, gives the student something to do. And then based upon what the student does, the teacher says, this is what your grade is. That's very much towards the extrinsic motivation into the continuum. In the grand experiment we have right now, we have the opportunity to work is offer the teachers or invite them to try to work with students to say, here is a mutually established learning goal we have within the curriculum. Here's, I want to work with you in terms of how you're going to get there and engage you in self-evaluating your own progress. And your self-evaluation will be conjoined with my evaluations. Your teacher will have a discussion in terms of what is the outcome of that. So basically what I'm, there are particulars on this that we could talk about. But I think the big idea is that we have an option here where we can move the whole process to such to get students more involved in their own goal setting and the evaluation of their own learning, that I think in the end could really improve the whole system.
Yeah, that's good. Bill, you want to comment on that?
No, I, I, I think that that's very interesting, Barry. And I, I think that motivation is really where we, where we need to be. I, I, I like to have Dave maybe chime in because that there, we talk about motivation and different, for different students, some, for some students, the high flyers, that grade is a motivator. That mean that they're, you know, they're looking to, to, to score that score so that they can have the opportunity that they want. But for, for many other students, that doesn't, that's not the motivator. And, and, and I, I wonder, you know, if maybe Dave could shed some light on what, exactly what Barry was talking about, which is more of a, okay, this, we got to get through this kind of material, kind of pick your project. How do we do the self-grading? I'm assuming, Dave, you do some of that stuff too? I don't know. Well, Coastal is unique. So we, based on the big picture style learning projects where a lot of the, a lot of the learning is individualized, we work with a lot of students to assess their interests, assess their strengths and weaknesses, and work with them in a lot of individualized sessions. So we work towards that typically. I think what's being presented to the board with the grading scheme allows us some flexibility. And that's probably the best option moving forward. Bill, to, you know, answer your questions best I can, we've always been kind of individualized school or kind of a one-size-fits-one type of learning environment. That's worked out very well for our students.
Okay. Kate, I saw your hand pop up.
Are, there's still going to be class rank. Mike, right? Where are you? There still will be class rank. So.
Well, we, we don't do class rank anymore.
Oh, okay.
We went away from that because that, that was hurting our 2 through 250 student population, other than the, the number one. So.
Okay.
It's more the rec, it's more twofold. It's the recommendations from the teacher. And to be honest, it, it's the content knowledge that they want to be prepared for the, for the next year.
I, I totally agree. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So I, I really, Barry, I think your comments were, were really very interesting and insightful. I, I suspect, and I'm predicting that there is going to be a lot of hard work that's going to have to be done. there is going to be a lot of hard work that's going to have to be done to prepare for next year. I don't think it's going to be quite as straightforward as it has been in the past. So I think all of these, this type of conversation is, is good. And we probably should be leveraging some of this for, for getting our brains ready for preparing for what's going to happen next, next, next school year. So. With that then, I certainly think that the proposal is, is right on. And I think Jeff was, was interested in having a board take action on this recommendation. So with that, would anybody like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to recommend the Board of Ed approves the adjustment in grading during the period of remote learning for students.
I second.
Okay. You have a second Candace?
Candace.
Any, any, any more, any other comments or points? And I'm, I'm sure we could go on for three hours on this. I saw Eric, he just popped your hand up.
Sorry, just can we get an update, maybe three weeks or a month from now, just how things are going? Not, nothing more than that, but it'd be good to understand.
Very, yeah, very good, very good point.
Yep, good point.
That's really good. And anybody else have any comments? Let's say that. Okay. All right. So with that, then we have a motion on the, on the, on the table or on the floor. So I'll tick down the names here. Candace?
Hi.
Barry?
Hi.
Jill?
Yes.
Hi.
Okay, Bill, I'm sorry, Bill. Yep, okay. Eric?
Hi.
Kate? John?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
And Tim says, okay, too. All right. Okay. So good, good discussion. I knew that that was going to be a, a tough one. When Jeff and I were working on the agenda and I went and asked them all a zillion of the questions. I think the administrative team has done a great job in pulling that together. And the document reads very, very, very clear. So with that though, we'll move on to the next item up for discussion. And that has to do with the, the point that was raised our last board meeting, which is guardian rights for learning platforms. So Jeff, do you want to?
Yeah, this was, uh, was brought forward as a, you know, a question because we had opened up guardian rights, you know, for, for the middle school. Have not done it, you know, for the high school and had not planned on or intended on doing it other than, as I mentioned, for those students that might have, you know, an individualized education plan or a 504 plan where it really was required where, you know, for that executive functioning and support and we needed parent involvement. We put together, we attached it, a sheet that kind of did a comparison of where, you know, what infinite campus does. And, you know, what the guardian component can do. Very similar in, in many facets as to, you know, what information, you know, parents will see. You know, how the information is communicated, how often the information is, is communicated. To, to me, you know, I, I kind of still stand firm that, you know, I don't, and I'm going to speak both as a superintendent and as, you know, a parent, I, as a parent, I, I don't, I don't want access to this. I, you know, as part of our mission statement, you know, we're building independent and critical thinkers. So I want to encourage my daughter, you know, to, you know, I'll monitor from afar and monitor through infinite campus because I get, you know, all of her missing work, upcoming work, grades. I could see it all there. I don't need additional access. And, you know, I, I think, you know, we had talked previously to me that, you know, we're kind of creating helicopter parents. I think that with the more access we give and we want independence. Now they're going to, kids are going off to college and they're going to be independent there. And we need to make sure their executive functioning skills are where they need to be. So happy to, you know, to talk further about it, but we wanted to provide this information as the item was brought up. So you can kind of see a comparison and, and that's kind of where we stand at the district level.
Uh, Barry?
Quick question. So this is the outline for what happens at the middle school?
The.
It is up here with the Google Classroom guardian rights for versus infinite campus. This is what's happening at the middle school?
No, this is, this is a comparison of Google Classroom guardianship for the district.
Yeah.
As well as if the campus, so on the bottom, what parents currently have access.
What I understand, this is not happening at the high school. So this is not across the district.
No, it is. It, infinite campus parent portal is happening at the high school.
Yeah.
All those things.
Isn't the high school predominantly using Google Classroom?
The high school uses Google Classroom, but we only have guardian rights for parents of students that have individual student service plans.
Yeah. I think the original question was, you, you were saying you wanted to give guardian rights to all high school parents. And we're, and what we're saying is, you know, through infinite campus, I, I, on the right there, I'm, I'm able to do all of this for my child at the high school.
You had to, I'm confused here because you've told me in the past that the high school is not using Google, infinite campus.
A high school uses infinite campus.
But they're not using it. I mean, extensively, they're using Google Classroom at the high school.
Using both.
Right. So you're at the middle school, the parents at the middle school get guardian access to Google Classroom where the middle school parents are using Google Classroom, teachers are using Google Classroom.
Yeah, they have, they have to opt, they have to opt into it.
Okay.
Which I, as a parent of a middle school, I just got that, you know, notification.
At the high school, you're not allowing parents at the high school to opt into the guardian.
Correct. Only if they have individual, their parents of students with individualized service.
Your reasoning, your reasoning for that is?
Because of the infinite campus availability and what we get for information through infinite campus.
So how does it change from the middle school where you provide parents access both through infinite campus and the guardian on Google classrooms at the middle school? But then when the student go to the high school, you only allow them infinite campus and not Google Classroom. Where does the, the thinking change on that?
Well, Barry, keep in mind, we just did this for the scenario that's going on right now because we're dealing with remote learning. We're trying to give parents of middle schoolers more assistance and access to oversee and work with, with their children. So that's the only reason, you know, we had opened this up.
Okay. And your reasoning not to provide that to the high school is?
Because we think that kids need to continue to have independence as part of our mission statement and they get enough through infinite campus.
The thing that bothers me is it's, do you remember Jeff, when we were on the, the call with the commissioner and the superintendents? The thing that I found was interesting is like how much complication was on that call with other superintendents and team members not being able to get access to microphones or get access to the, to the discussion. And I was kept thinking, you know, this is a very new environment for all the superintendents and team members and ministry on that. And the amount of complications that occurred. The move to the online instruction is that they're moving, we're moving people into a very different and complex area. And I don't see the downfall of just allowing parents to opt in at the high school for information through Google Classroom as we do for parents at the middle school. If the parents and students, it's another level of support for them. And I, on the view of independence, we actually, if students are getting confused, A will more likely just drop out and become a independent rather than independent. If they don't, if they get overwhelmed by the complexities of moving into the online, we're moving them into a different area. I don't understand, like, we just don't give them the support for that.
Well, if a parent requires the support and they reach out to, you know, the high school, you know, requesting that, then if that's something that can be discussed. I just philosophically, I'm just going to disagree with that, Barry. I just, I don't, I, I don't think it's appropriate for every child. If, if students are in need, then, then yeah, it could be an option.
Well, you don't offer the same opportunities at the high school that you do at the middle school. I don't see how the logic of follows.
Because middle schools are much more dependent on support, you know, and building executive functioning skills versus high schoolers.
But you're moving them to a very different environment that you haven't really prepared them for.
I have a question. Was Google Classroom being heavily used at the middle school prior to this situation?
Only in some stu, only in some particular teacher cases, whereas the high school has been using glass, Google Classroom for over two years.
Yeah. So that, that, that's my, that would be my answer back is to say that because this is just a brand new tool and you're dealing with, but I assume it goes all the way down to fifth graders. That you've decided to have the, the guardian access at the middle school level. But you also decided just to continue how you have, have been using Google Classroom at the high school.
Exactly.
Correct. Correct.
Amy, did you want to say something else?
No, no, I was, I was just going to say, I, I was just trying to provide a document so that you could see what every parent gets access to as far as infinite campus parent portal as a pre K to 12 parent. And then show you in regards to Google Classroom and sort of who has access to what, what information is communicated for those of you who might not understand. So.
Any other, other comments?
I have some.
Candace?
Yep. Yes, it was Candace. Thank you. So I'm going to completely agree with everything that our superintendent stated in regards to promoting independence. When this first, this question first came up, I was the first one to speak to it as a parent with two middle schoolers. And I am 150% on board with promoting as much independence as possible. Once your child gets to the middle school, that doesn't mean that a parent isn't supporting their, their, their children. It means that children are being held accountable for their work. And that's how I see it. If, if you could ask any teacher that we have ever had, that especially as kids have aged and gone through the school system, they must be accountable. They must learn to navigate and be critical thinkers. And if you don't allow them that opportunity, they won't, they won't, they won't learn. It's kind of like that saying, you know, if you cut it for me, I don't learn to cut it myself. If you do it for me, the only thing you're teaching me is that you do it better than me. You know, sometimes, you know, kids have to, well, I firmly believe that kids have to learn and fail and learn to get back up and, and learn coping skills and what to do and what not to do. And, and they learn that when they are accountable and, and are doing it. So I'm perfectly fine with the way that we have it. I think with the Google Classroom, you know, I've navigated it in the background from my children. He, they've shown me, I, I certainly don't have access to it. I do know that it was sparingly used or, or by teachers, you know, they, they by choice, they were using Google Classroom prior to our pandemic. And now many have, you know, had to shift over and it's been a learning curve for them in addition to the students, some of them depending upon their age group. But at the high school level specifically, they're going to be adults very soon. I, I just don't see why, you know, why this would be such a, a talking point, but that's all I have on it.
Okay, good. Jill, did you want to get something in? I saw you flip off your mute.
No, not, not at this time now.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to make a comment or jump in? Jamie?
I just want to echo what Candace just said. I completely support my administration on this one. Right now I have an eighth grader who's just now starting the Google Classroom and I have been helping her because I've been learning how to navigate it with her. So if she needs help, I'm here for her to help her figure out how to navigate it. But that is it. I get the emails from her teachers and I ask her what she's doing and if she's doing it. But I am in no way sitting there logged into her Google Classroom, making sure her stuff is being done and, and how it's being done. Where my junior, I don't even touch his Google Classroom. He has access to it. If I ask him if I need to look at it, he'll let me look at it. But I get the infinite campus homework assignments and I get a Google email saying this is what to do. And that's it. He's almost 18. He needs to learn how to do his own work and his own assignments on his own. I, I'm not going to be there for them for the rest of their life. They need to learn how to do this on their own. I mean, it, we just talked about teaching them independence. I, I'm not doing the homework for them. I'm not doing their schoolwork for them. That is up to them to do. If they don't do it, then they don't, a problem, not my problem. And that's going to affect them later in their life. So I, I completely support the administration's call for the kids learning their independence. We can't hold their hands in their lives.
Okay, anybody else? Any other comments on this topic? Barry, you flip off.
Just I worked, I looked back at why Google set this up. They started this out without the Google Guardian and there were reasons that they did set it up and they included it so that they would get more student success in the online environment. Research over and over shows that there's a great dropout in online environments for students that don't have supports. The support the guardian provides is not as parents doing the work with students, just an additional option so that students will have a, a lifeline to go to if they run into a problem. But obviously I'm in the minority here. And so I just, but I do want to get those discussions out there that I really very strongly don't see why this is, it's an easy option. It's a non invasive option. It's very easy to provide and not everybody has to use it. I don't understand like why we're not providing it.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Any other things for discussion on this one? Okay. So I guess we will move on to, oh, our next, the, the, the next fun topic here. So we're up to the discussion of our 2020, 21 budget. And Jeff, do you want to take over?
Yes. So we, we wanted to bring forth a couple of, of slides, especially for our community to make sure that, you know, those that are watching or taking part can kind of see, you know, some of the rational decisions that, you know, we need to make as it pertains to, you know, next year's budget. Let me just start off by saying, you know, that we are very cognizant of the fact that, you know, we're, we're in a difficult situation. And I think we, we really play that into, you know, next year's budget. And the idea that, you know, we do need to make some, some reductions, but we also need to make sure we're supporting our district and moving forward. So I'm going to share my screen. So everyone can, can see this and I'll run through these, these slides. So a second and this will share. Everyone see the slides? Are we, do we see that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And I just say also our high school and middle school administration, we are still on, you're welcome to stay. But, you know, I'm not going to, you don't have to, you don't want to, but you're welcome to stay and listen in on the budget. We've already had a lot of discussions about this. So let me walk through some of these and I want to credit FFO again, our facilities, finance and operations committee and the members of that committee, a lot of hard work, a lot of discussions of late. We appreciate all of their efforts. And we also appreciate, we've received feedback from board of finance members as well. So we're really trying to work collaboratively, you know, with the group this, for, in preparation for next year's, you know, budget and also work with the town. So let's go through these and let's, we're just talking about, you know, the environment, environmental assessment, you know, as of today and the issues, you know, that have come forward. I mean, COVID has brought, you know, enormous change, you know, and uncertainty, you know, we're, we're dealing and hearing on an ongoing basis of unemployment, recession, emotional stresses and fears, you know, that, that are out there. Many of us are dealing with them. Many of our family members are dealing with them. It's been, you know, our worlds have been flipped upside down and has left us with a lot of uncertainty as it pertains to, you know, our future and, you know, what next year, you know, is going to look like, how long this is going to last and what the eventual impacts, you know, will, will be. Hopefully, I, I pray that someday we will be able to get back to normal, but we just don't know if that's going to happen. So, you know, the questions and concerns for us as, as a district, you know, the first and foremost and the biggest one is, you know, will schools reopen? I mean, thinking for next year, you know, for this year, probably not, but for, for next year. And will we have yaps next year where we'll need to close? As I had mentioned earlier, if things flare up in the winter time. So we need to be cognizant of that and we need to be prepared for that. And a lot of that preparation is going to come into the need for, you know, tech. And a lot of that preparation is going to come into the need for, you know, technology support and making sure that, you know, we can jump right into online, you know, learning and online education. Immediately if necessary, as it pertains to next year. So we look at a problem statement, you know, with that, that, and I'll just read this, that September, you know, children will not have been in school for, you know, almost six months. That's a long time and for them to come back to school, you know, next year, if we if we were able to start up at the beginning next year. There's going to be a need for a lot of support for kids who have been out of that safety environment, out of that structured environment for many of them for a long period of time. So I it would, and I'll put this out there, it would be a bit of a disservice if we don't have. Another, if we had to make reductions or cuts in, you know, social workers or staff members or class sizes were were higher. And bringing kids back into environments that, you know, they are expecting to be the same as they were six months prior. So that's a concern and I think we have to factor that in and we also have to praise, you know, what teachers and administrators and staff have done with remote learning so far. So considerations, you know, we look at, you know, next year's budget, you know, we are aware of the fact that, you know. Recession components are in play, unemployment rates, you know, have grown tremendously. We have heard, as I mentioned, and getting feedback from the Board of Finance in the town as it pertains to taxes and tax increases for next year. And potential decreased revenues that could come into play. So we know it would not be appropriate for a 4.98% increase. You know, this was a very hopeful year. This was a year where we really wanted to to. Turn the corner and begin rebuilding for a lot of different reasons. That's not going to happen. So we also know it's not appropriate, though, to to have the district unprepared as we look at next year too. So where is the happy medium in all of that? And that's what, you know, we collaboratively need to work, you know, with the Board of Finance on on finding. Some key areas that in that we need to stay focused on, you know, that came through FFO and came through some some discussions with all of you. Supporting and through administration, you know, supporting our current staff and and not losing folks, you know, to that they will become unemployed or we'd have to cut staff. That impacts staff morale and it's a critical component that in such a hard time that we're supporting, you know, all of our folks and. And keeping them employed as much as possible and also the need to provide professional development and ongoing technology support for many of them as they've struggled with that. Being that being said, technology is a critical one, you know, for next year and making sure all kids, you know, have equal access and support. And we've given out and mentioned a number of different times, you know, almost 300 devices. Internet access to many families, that support is not going to go away. We're going to need to do that in the future. We're going to need more devices, you know, to to continue that. Special education is a major concern and a major challenge because we're not meeting the needs of individualized education plans right now. So that worries us. There could be lawsuits. There could be potentially need for compensatory services. We're very concerned with extended school year, summer program, you know, that's supposed to be coming up, starting, you know, this summer. That could be impacted. That could not happen potentially. That's could make things worse. So we want to be very careful that we support kids as much as we can because if we have to go to the town for special appropriations. You know, that that's that's a fear. So we just want to make sure that's on our radar. And we we've heard from, you know, our board members and it's it's a regulation and part of our policy with our class size guidelines in that chart. You know, we are still, you know, K enrollment is going to be slower this year because of what's going on. So we're not going to know those numbers until later on. But we know that our current kindergarten is going to first grade. Those numbers are extremely high. And that is a big priority, a number one priority, I know, for our Board of Education, that our class sizes are what they are. I I would hate, I'll go to the point, I would hate for, you know, our students to come back, you know, next year and they're, you know, again, they've been out for six months. And they come back to class sizes and struggles that are that much higher and that much more. So that that's a fear. That's not something we want to see to have happen. So those four are probably our biggest key areas that we need to focus on. But that being said, too, the reductions and reduction scenarios, we worked hard, you know, at our FFO Subcommittee of the Board. We're really focusing over here on the scenario two, which looks at a total reduction of 752,000. And, you know, we we do have the reduction of the first grade teachers and the kindergarten kindergarten teachers in here. So I I think that plays in with, you know, what are we going to have and we don't know yet. What are we going to have for end of the year money? Because, you know, we're trying to recruit some savings. We were planning on freezing the budget as of this, you know, past March anyways. So we're going to have some savings. We don't know what that total savings amount is. It's a couple hundred thousand. Pull that together and this is not pull that together, the 752 to bring forth, you know, that type of a reduction. I think that's something the Board of Ed's got to talk about and has to decide on. With the under the premise, of course, that, you know, we we don't want to lose those things that are most important to us on that previous previous slide. So with that, I'll open it up to questions and, you know, I know. Again, I want to credit and thank the FFO Committee and FFO Committee members or or board members and feel free to chime in on anything or points, you know, that I missed that we talked about. That are things that we need to continue to make sure we're referencing and aware of.
I was just gonna maybe ask if Eric wanted to make any comments, just as the I was chairing the FFO.
Thanks, Tim. Yeah, and and thanks, Jeff and the administration and the team, everyone pulling, doing a lot of work and FFO. This was a lot of work trying to figure out. There are no good, where we got to is there's no good answers. Every one of these, I think every board member will look at every one of these items that we cut and some will say, how could we do that? How could we do that? I mean, that's where we were. And, you know, I have my particular ones that I'm not overly happy that we're reducing someone else's others. So we're all, you know, not overly happy with where we are, but we also, I think, recognize the situation we're in. And I think, you know, that it's prudent, it's reasonable coming that the 752. Is a scenario that I I think we can, you know, li- live with, get by with, whatever for next year. So I I just, you know, a lot of work and I'm sure there'll be some comments or but I I do. I do think we at least came up with something that we can get by with for 2020 21 school year.
Jeff, I can't, now I can't see everybody's picture because of the slide point, the PowerPoint that's up. So it's hard for me to recognize who would like to speak. Ah, here we go. Okay. So comments, discussion, do you want to say something? Barry?
And one question, Jeff, on the original budget item 322, there was a 48% increase in that. Has that been maintained as you move through these budget scenarios?
Mariana, do you have? We'll look that up, Barry, to see the specific number.
The object 322, Barry?
322.
Yeah, that increased 24,500. That has been maintained. We have not touched that yet. Is that the one you're talking about? There's an increase of 24,500?
Okay. And. I'm just interested like why, you know, with all the other cuts, why that one maintained where it was?
Jeff, that's in, that's a professional development, just so you know what it is basically.
Well, with with PD components, you know, I'd be nervous to cut because I think we're going to need. You know, that professional development dollars for, especially in the world of technology, you know, moving forward into, you know, into next year. So I would be. A little nervous in trying to reduce that that more. We can always go back and look at it as we're going back and looking at, you know, at everything.
Yeah, that that's that's. That is PD for the entire district, teachers, administration, all staff and everything. That's our, that's our only line item for PD.
And I just would be nervous. We've already, we've made some pretty drastic cuts in that. Prior, I just will be hesitant to reduce there further. I think there's some other areas too that we might be able to find, you know, some additional savings. You know, as we move through, you know, each day new things, you know, come up. That'd be a tough one.
Okay. It's remember, we brought that, we had that discussion in the board, we were, remember, Tim was bringing up the idea about how are we making sure we're getting that right? So I think we maintain that we would have to maybe have some discussion down the line as to how, you know, how we're. If if that question came up in any further discussions, we would have to have an answer for like, how are we making sure that that expenditure, we're going to get it right? And it's going to enhance the learning of case in the district.
Yeah, we did get a question on travel, you know, for instance, you know, as we look at next year, these are things we've got to be kind of thinking outside the box of, you know, if. If we are. In the same place as we are right now, you know, the start of next year, there won't be teachers traveling to workshops or conferences or administrators traveling. So, you know, there could be some savings there. I think that's something that we want to maybe try and factor in. Maybe that's a line I could reduce, you know, a little bit. So we're trying to think about, you know, the some of the impacts next year that might be happening that could potentially save us money is what we're seeing right now.
Other other comments, questions? Else? No, raise hand.
I'll go, Tim.
Yeah, go ahead, Candace. Thanks.
Okay, so first of all, I want to thank the FFO and all the work that's been done. I don't think that any of this is easy. I think everybody is just trying to get through the day. And it's it's really having a tremendous impact pretty much on everyone, right, in different ways. So it would be completely irresponsible of the Board of Ed to move forward with the proposed budget that we had planned. And it's painful to to know, you know, the needs. And then have to just say, no, we can't, we really can't move forward with what we had planned. A couple of things that I had had said prior was the class sizes, numbers, those types of things. I think that, again, people are taking one step at a time. I don't think that things are on the forefront as far as, you know, kindergarten registration at the moment. I don't think that, you know, so I I just think that those things need to really be paid attention to. You know, historically, our numbers always skyrocket right at the end. And this past year was a great example of what we don't want to see again. The class size guidelines was put in place for a reason and I stand by them and I support them. And we just have to move forward very, very carefully, I think. And that's all I have at the moment, I think. Thanks.
Good, good. You know, Jeff, the one question I had was, um, again, this is such an odd situation that that we're in. But but let's think for a second in terms of next September. I suspect that we will still be doing something of a hybrid where we're going to have an incredible usage of one, one to one devices. With the kids. It's it's going to, it's going to be a mandatory part of the curriculum. And against that, then, right now, what we're how we're handling it right now is people are, people are using their devices that they have at home, if they, if they have it, the kids have it. Or if they don't have it, we're providing it. And that was on the on the order of about 300 of our computers have gone out into into families' homes. And we've also, we're also spending money to provide internet service for those families that didn't have internet service as well. So I just, I'm I'm wondering if 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 there's been any discussion about the, you know, you know, the legality in going forward. Of having it, you know, devices are mandatory for every child to have access for it. If in fact that the district needs to take steps to assure that or to assure or provide devices for the children. And I I don't know if you.
Yeah.
Discussions?
Yeah, quite a quite a bit, you know, just in we we, you know, pulled devices from, you know, laptop carts and, you know, kivas and classrooms, et cetera. You know, we're not going to see all 300 come back and come back in the best of shape sort of thing. And again, that we have got to prepare ourselves, you know, for for next year and being out and to ramp up an online learning. Not just continued educational opportunities, it's got to become online learning. So we have to be able to be prepared for that. And I think hence, going to the acquisition plan, you know, we had asked for the, or we were going to ask for the 927,000, you know, to help support, you know, these these initiatives and moving forward before all this started. And that was 200,000 in the operating budget. You know, maybe there's a line of of us discussing, do we cut that in half? Did we say, okay, let's go, you know, try and use 400 plus thousand or 500,000? And now it's only 100,000 in the operating budget to support, you know, just purchasing for the high school. To start, you know, maybe getting a device for every high school student. There is that networking side, though, too, that in I know we've talked, you know, side of prioritizing, you know, prioritize the high school networking needs to be finished. So we can get that done. So those are two big ones. I think our focus turns to the high school and getting that that building and those students equipped as we look at next year.
Yeah, yeah, I I my intuition keeps telling, I have an alarm bell that's going off in my head and it's saying, order laptops now, immediately. Every every school district in the country, especially in the on the East Coast side and in in the more densely populated areas are going to are going to be. Somehow stuck or going down this path. And so I just have this 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 terrible feeling that, you know, we we, in order to provide quality education for our children. They all have to have equal access to the to the systems that we're using. They, everybody's got to have it. And and I just think that we're, we should really be taking steps toward that. Gosh, if it turned out that a miracle cure comes up and the COVID-19 disappears into the, you know, world or whatever. I don't care. I, you know, I mean, it's, that's wonderful news and we'll have all these laptops, but if, but it's it's not going to go away. Okay? And so I think we should be taking proactive steps to be to be ready for those those scenarios that that most likely as the as the CDC came out this this morning. I guess it was yesterday and said that there probably will be a wave, a second wave, and that wave will probably be even worse than what we're going through now. Because it's going to coincide with the influenza. And so the burden on the hospitals is going to be staggering. So you're not going to, kids, you're not going to have kids in in school. So I just, you know, I just, that's my 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 worry right now. And of course, I think the other point about what you made, you know, in terms of the staff morale is just absolutely critical. Because if we, if again, if we're going to be going down this crazy. Situation in the fall where you're going to have to do modifications to how you go about grading assignments and all of those things. The the amount of pressure that's going to be on the administrative team and then on the teaching staff is is going to be, it's just going to be, it's going to be an awful lot to be asking for. And I, and again, I'm very worried about the morale of the overall morale of the of the staff in the in the district as we face this. It's been fantastic so far, but but it's kind of a, it's kind of a new challenging thing. Next year could be unfortunately not that, not that much fun.
Absolutely. And Amy and I talked to, go ahead, Amy, probably want to talk about the devices because, you know, we were just talking about ordering those in the timeline and would it take longer, you know? So I don't even if you had any further research that you had done, because you started looking into that.
Yeah, so I think I think for me, the conversation comes over the fact that we are going to have to ship our teachers when all is said and done and we're able to convene together to a blended learning environment. They will be forced to be that blended and learning environment because the their new reality is that any point you could be going mobile. And we will struggle with that because the example I gave to Jeff the other day is if that happened at the high school, for example. I probably have enough laptops at the high school to possibly cover one grade level of the high school. So if that were to happen, I'd be able to maybe take care of my ninth graders and then my 10th, 11th and 12th graders would have to go home with nothing. And work with the home device that hopefully I hope that they have. So that's some of the conversations that we've been having is that if I need to condition teachers to this blended learning model of that in person and that online experience. So that's some of the conversations that we've been having is that if I need to condition teachers to this blended learning model of that in person and that online experience. But I can't provide them with the devices and tools to be doing that on a daily basis with students. We could be directly impacting the outcome of that model should we have another wave. So that, that, that is, that is real. That is definitely our reality. Um, and that is something that, you know, as we bring teachers back and we engage them in PD to be, you know, to be able to really think about that blended learning model. Um, we, if we don't provide them with the tools, uh, for them to go mobile, we're continuing to put on the parents. I did just get a text from, um, on my tech staff who has been deploying devices. And this week we have had an uptake of 29 additional requests for computers. So I do think that the longer we go with this model, the more parents are going to be reaching out to us saying, all right, sorry. My high schooler is now taking over our family laptop. I need one now for my other elementary kid. It's just, it's not working. Or, you know, my husband is now working from home. He wasn't before. We only have two devices. We need something else. So we are seeing an uptake in the last six days of, um, parents starting to ask for devices. And, uh, we probably have about a. 98 more that we would feel comfortable landing out. And then we're going to hit a freeze because I don't know if you remember, but when. Mark Nickerson at one point made a comment in regards to us being, oh, well, you're almost one to one. Look how many devices we have. Well, the 60% of desktops aren't helping us right now. So that, that's part, that's part of the, the flux that we're in. And then also for the purchasing of laptops, we're now competing with other districts and under industries. Um, and getting them. And even, for example, I told Jeff the other day, I received an email from our pro vice purchase. That was approved by the building committee and that we had to postpone because nobody's there obviously to accept the delivery. And they're huge, you don't want the board sitting in, um, certain spots for too, too long of a period of time. And, um, I'm now only able to get them in increments of 10. And I won't get the first shipment now until July 1st. So there could be an issue with, you know, gaining access to certain things, um, that we need.
Candace, I see you took your phone off on, off of mute. Do you have something you want to add?
I do, um, because of the technology piece and, and I do believe that we are probably going to see this happen again. I think that this situation has really put a spotlight. Um, on many districts, on every district, right? But on ours and our specific needs and why, why we need, um, to invest more into the technology. I've listened to, uh, well, first of all, I've said all along, and I will continue to say that our district is. Risen to the occasion. I think that they've done the absolute best that they possibly can. Um, I think they've done a wonderful job and I support them 150%. With that being said, I think that it also has shown that we need more. Um, we are being, um, uh, compared to other districts. Um, I think that the comment that Amy just made about the desktops, uh, was pretty pointed and, and valued. Um, I think that this very well could happen again. I'm fearful of it. And I would really like to live and learn here, uh, better our district and be even more prepared. Um, for the next time, I hope this doesn't happen again. I really don't want this to happen again, but it very well may. And if it does, I really want us to be more prepared, um, for our students. For simply for our students, I think that I, I have a lot of concerns. I think everybody does. Um, specifically, you know, how children are learning, when they're going to go back to school, what the difference is going to be, the grading. Um, their emotional skills, you know, there's so many different things. Uh, children that are going from the fourth grade to the fifth grade to the middle school. And that we've already seen, you know, different challenges that we specifically have here in this district with the fourth graders going into fifth grade. The eighth graders going into the ninth grade. Um, and I, I, I would really like to see us, uh, be supported. Uh, by the town, uh, for, for our technology needs and to, um, try to get ahead of it for if and when it impacts us again.
Good. I saw Bill, uh, Kate, did you want to say something first? I saw you had gone off of mute. No, you're, you're on mute.
Okay, so I just wanted to say, you know, I think it's been a real arduous task going through all of this. And I think that the technology is really important. And I think that we're going to continue to try to have the same kind of outcomes that we had previously. But the whole paradigm, the whole world has shifted. And somebody said the other day that was kind of like looking at Maslow's hierarchy with Bloom's taxonomy placed on top of it. Trying to figure out, you know, basic needs and then continue to have them do this. Uh, erudite thinking and executive function and all this. So definitely we need to support our learners as much as possible so that we can maintain the quality of education that, that East Lime has noted for.
Good. Are you good? Bill?
I've just got so many thoughts spinning through my head right now, um, on a lot of different levels. I, I did not witness the FFO meeting and I think you guys worked really hard. I just, what, what I'm, where I'm coming from though is we were trying, you guys, I assume are trying to work with a budget that was built. Pre-COVID-19 and you made cuts based on that fact, but. My guess is that many of our needs, um, with the exception of, I a hundred percent agree with. Supporting, keeping our, our, our staff numbers where they are and, and so forth. But many of the things that we built that budget on are, um, some of that stuff may shift. And I don't envy Mariana because I only imagine this year she's going to be saying this budget, this particular line item. We barely used it. We went way over, over here. I got to shift all this money all over the place. All, and, and, um. What I'm getting at is, you know, if this is. Uh, this is the new way of, of moving and next year is going to be some repercussions. This, are we really? Did we, are we missing something in that budget? For example, um, I know that the number of meals that we're putting out is, is much higher than we were. Are there going to be more people on free and reduced lunch next year because there are of different, um, you know, income brackets and so forth? And, and is our food program going to, going to shift to the red? Um, uh, do, are, do we have ways to support that? Is the federal government coming in to help out with that piece? Um, likewise, you know, we, we, we talk about professional development for our teachers. Should we be looking at, um, and I know that Jamie, you've got an elementary schooler there. It, it, is there some outreach that we should be building to, to empower parents to do a better job of homeschooling? And, you know, should there be some program in place that we're providing to help them say, okay, you know, your teachers are giving you this. But here's how you, you can help deliver that. So there's a lot of pieces that I'm not sure that were ever put into the budget last year to begin with that we, whether, you know. That we're going to be faced with next year that, oh, shoot. You know, we didn't even consider this or. So I, I don't know. There's just, uh, it's definitely a complicated challenge and I don't want to, I don't want to miss something. So the budget that we built was built without COVID-19. And then we're making cuts to it based on. The fact that the economy is where it is and all of that. So do we need to? All take another look at that in some way? I don't know. Or at least where the money is going to go.
It's a good point, Bill, and you know, just keeping in mind too, what's the 2122 budget, you know, going to look like as well? Um, because what happens next year is potentially going to impact, you know, the year after, um, as well. It's, so I, I mean, I, I want to be cautious, um, you know, want to work with, with the Board of Finance in the, in the town. I, I don't want us. And I, and I'm hoping that, you know, the Board of Finance, we don't want to bury, you know, the district and bury the town. Because when, yeah, we use the, the example, you know, you have a hurricane, you, you bring forth funds to support and rebuild. Uh, I feel like this has been a bit of a hurricane.
I wonder, and John has, I, I, I'm assuming John's listening there, but I, I know that, you know, that the federal government is, is stepping in and bailing out. Or not bailing out, but trying to help, uh, small businesses and there's, there's money there. Has there been much talk about how the government might be assisting schools in these difficult times as well? Is there going to be, um, you know, are they going to? Get into some debt as well to try to help the situation out? Or is it, are they going to give less because they don't have it?
I, I think it's an ongoing conversation that continues to evolve every single day. But no, no answers yet, Bill, so.
Yeah, yeah, they're talking, I mean, there, there were, yeah, Mitch McConnell of the, the Senate, in the Senate, uh, said today that, uh. Let the, let the states go bankrupt. Which I thought was a very interesting comment to, to, to make.
Yeah, not very helpful either, so.
No, yeah, really. I just was shocked. I was really surprised. So anyway. Um, yeah, so I, uh, other comments. Eric, Eric's got his hand up.
Yes, just two, two quick ones. So, um, technology, technology, technology. So I, that's, I, it's critical. Um, I think, you know, I said to FF, at FFO, um, that, you know, we, I don't want to say we get a pass, but. We're learning, this is unprecedented. No one had expectations of what we were going to do for this year. Um, and, and how we're going to solve it. And I think we're doing a great job. But if this recurs six months from now, a year from now, three years from now. Um, we are not, we're not going to get the same kind of pass. Like we, we should have learned from this and done something. And technology is clearly something we need to invest in to Tim's point and Amy kind of, we need to. Um, we need to move to one to one and we need to move quickly, I think, and we need to get our technology up to speed. Bill, just quickly to your point, one of the things, because we did talk about this at FFO. I think one of the challenges we have is we don't know what we don't know. So to start looking at the two, next year's budget and to, if, if you told us we're not opening September and October. I think we would. Adjust our budget accordingly, which is probably some things go up and some things go down and hopefully they all net. Um, but you know, right now from my perspective is we have to plan on that we are going back in September or end of August. Until we know that we're not, um, and then we need to adjust accordingly. So that, that's my view on how we kind of approach this, but you're right. It's, um, we may, just may change in three months or something or in two months when we learn more and say, okay, we're not opening in September. You know, then, then that changes things.
Thank you. Good, okay. Anybody else? Barry?
Three quick comments. Uh, on the presentation, I think that. Um, this is, you know, when you look forward the budget, the, there's a, uh, prevailing mood out there that the sky is falling. I think that the more we can say that the opportunity we have with, uh, this change in the infusion of technology into our schools. Is going to make them much, much better on the other side of this. So we had to kind of come up here with a very, very positive outcome of this. We're moving forward. The sky is not falling. We have the opportunity to become really much, much better. Um, second point, I think on that, uh, point that brought up before on 322, that item number. We have an increase in that. I don't see it reflected in the, uh, presentation. And I would hate to have you go forward into a public arena and have somebody find that out. And just for full transparency, I think somehow that item should be reflected out there that we do have about a 50% increase in that item. And I, again, I just don't want to be embarrassed in a public thing when somebody comes up and says, hey, you, you had this in there, but you never. Uh, brought it out. And just for full transparency, I think, um, we should get that out there. And, um. Technology, technology, that's, we have to go with that. That's it.
Good. Thanks, Barry. Anybody else?
Third point was that when we go with the presentation, also we have to, the more we can, uh, keep building in that theme that the outcome we're after. Is that each of these activities is directed in a way to enhance student learning. So we just don't present it in terms of inputs as we're going to do this, this and this, but more in terms of. As we do this, the eventual outcome of this, we're going to really improve student learning. That's it.
Good, very good, very good. I'll just one more time echo and say that as, as I've been, again, I've been giving this a lot of thought and everything. Um, I think we should be, I think strategically, we should just be buying one, one to one devices, uh, immediately. Um, or get our, get it, get in the queue. Um, because I think that, I, I think if, if we don't, uh, and. Any hybrid of what we're experiencing now occurs in the, in the fall and you can't get the, the devices. It's just going to make it that much harder. Um, so that's just, again, I, my two cents for, uh. Nudging us along on this. Okay, so, uh, we have another board meeting, uh, scheduled for Monday. Uh, and, um. The budget will be front and center discussion. Um, Jeff will be, I'm sure, taking, uh, more, more than willing to accept any comments and. And other ideas that people have as you look at the budget to, to try to bring it more in line. I think Bill made some really good points about looking at the budget through a different lens, um, of, of what, what, what things might be like. Uh, that may, may trigger some more conversation around what, what, what can we defer? Where can we take, you know, take some risk? Um, but the goal is, is that, uh, on, uh, next Monday that we will, uh, come to an agreement, um, as a board. Uh, as to, um, a recommended proposal to take forward to the Board of Finance. Um, and, uh, and we need to do that so that Mariana can do her thing, uh, and provide the pack, necessary packages. Um, so the Board of Finance will have time to, uh, to review and, and reflect on, uh, on our, uh, recommendations. Uh, and, uh, in going forward. So, so with that, unless Jeff, is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, I, I think, I think that about covers. I think, you know, we, we definitely have some work. We're going to continue, um, to try and reach out to the Board of Finance and, and, uh, work through this.
Yeah, and I, and I tell you, I do not envy their, their, their challenge as well. Because I mean, the, the level of uncertainty that we have. Is of one magnitude, the level of uncertainty that they have is they have the revenue side, uh, to worry about. And, uh, that's just a, just a very tough, uh, thing for, for, to come to grips with, with all the uncertainty. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to our next item for discussion action that has to do with our bus contract. And, uh, Jeff, you want to take over on that?
Yeah, thanks. So, um, we, uh, have some final, um, consensus on, uh, a recommended, uh, contract modification for, with first student. Uh, I, I think it's, we've been lucky, uh, that, you know, we have first student in this sense, uh, as our bus company. Because some bus companies, uh, have held firm that, you know what, pay us a hundred percent and we're not budging on it. Uh, so it gets into legal and everything else. Um, you know, we did talk with, with our legal firm a little bit on this, but, you know, we're able to come to an amicable, you know, agreement of, uh, what we think is a very fair and very positive number. For the percentage, uh, that is left to pay for the buses. We owe, and Mariana, correct me if I'm wrong, we owe about 425,000 for the rest of the year. If we were in session with the buses, they are asking that we pay 65% of that. Uh, which is roughly covering the staffing costs, which is really, I think, where we should be, you know, to help support that. Not covering, you know, the cost of maintenance for buses or, uh, you know, depreciation. Uh, it's covering the cost of, of staffing. So, um, I, I'm not hearing any numbers lower, uh, from any of our regional superintendents. Mariana, with your group too, your business directors group, I don't think you're hearing it either. So I think that's a pretty good number. That's going to save us, um, roughly, you know, was about 125,000, Mariana? Somewhere in there. So, uh, so there's a number that we can help to apply, you know, as we look at, you know, next year or, you know, we're continuing to reduce our, our budget. As we move forward. So we, we would ask, you know, the, the Board of Education, you know, support that and, uh, you know, make a motion to allow me to, to go in and finalize, you know, a, a modified, uh, agreement with them. Um, that would, uh, put us paying them 65% of the remaining of the contract for this year. And, uh, you know, we'd have savings that we. At, at the end of the year.
Would somebody like to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion. I would like to make a motion for the superintendent to engage in finalizing a modified bus contract for the 2019, 2020 school year.
I'll second.
Okay, okay. Any further discussion on this item? Great job on the negotiating part. I mean, that's really, I'm, I'm really surprised, uh. Uh, that I thought it was going to be much higher, so really.
We thought, yeah, we thought so too, because they wanted upwards of, you know, higher eighties and we. And we thought we'd settle in the 70s and they agreed with 65, so that, that worked out well.
It's good. Okay, so let's see, with that then, I just want to make sure we go down the line here. So Candace?
Hi.
Barry?
Hi.
Bill? Okay, yep, you got Bill and Jill. Eric?
Hi.
Kate? Okay, John?
Hi.
And Jamie?
Hi.
And Tim, I say hi. So that's, that's great. That motion passes and we got some, some extra money for every, for the town, I guess, or for us. Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
The last item is, or just really for information, really, it's not really for discussion, although I feel kind of sad about this. But anyway, we have an elementary principal position that, that is, will be opening up. So Jeff, you want to?
Yeah, so, you know, a few weeks back, Linda Nania, you know, had come to me and talked about, you know, her, she wasn't sure if she was ready, but, you know, through all of this and, you know, the concerns with, you know, her family and she's decided to, to retire into this year. You know, she's done, done a wonderful job. You know, we are going to miss her. We kept it quiet so she could tell her staff, which she did this morning. And, you know, I, I think she got a lot of nice positive comments from, from parents. She had a lot of parents sent a letter and her staff as well. I'm going to put something out district wide probably tomorrow morning. But we will be looking for a, a new elementary principal. So in, in, in an interesting time nonetheless, you know, but interviews are going on, Zoom meetings, et cetera. It, it will be done. Last week, you know, Jack and I were working on brochure, kind of found the same steps we've done with the other principals when we hired Jason as a principal of the middle school, we'll be doing the same thing. I'm going to go and talk with the Flanders faculty via Zoom. We'll figure out how to do that to gain some feedback from them as to what they'd like to see in the next principal. Maybe try and get some parent feedback. We'll see if we can do that. Obviously, we will want, you know, two board members to join. We'll form a committee. And, you know, we'll have some, some folks across Flanders School as well as some other administrators. And we'll be starting to set up a schedule. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that. And, you know, we will miss Linda. She's done a great job. But, you know, we've got some big shoes to fill and we'll get that process rolling.
Candace, did you want to say something?
I did. I will miss Linda. I think that she's an incredible lady. I think she's an incredible principal. And I'll make sure to reach out to her as far as wishing her the very, very best in retirement. This district will miss her. In addition, I'd like to offer my services for hiring committee. And that's all.
We will definitely get Linda on the line too at some point, you know, to, to say thank you as, you know, we've done with, you know, our other folks, Judy Delu left and, you know, some others. So we'll be working on that as well.
Good, okay. All right, so that concludes the discussion action items for the evening. Jeff, superintendent, report anything else to add?
Just one quick item, just in case anybody drives by, you know, the middle schooler goes around the access road by the middle school. I was going to put it in the weekly update, you know, tomorrow, but this is an easier opportunity. So they're, they're starting early. They're going to do it this summer, but they're digging that well line from well 1A, I think up by the baseball fields, all the way down, you know, to the pump house by Lily B. Haynes. So that, because there's, you know, nobody on site, really, it's a great time to be able to get it done. So they're starting that early. And Chris Lund has been working with the town on that. So if you see digging going on back there, there's a bunch of pipes that are already dropped off. That's what's, what's occurring. So I just want to make sure you weren't going, hmm, what's going on back there? Nothing elementary project related, but that's what's, that's what's happening. So that's about it. Couple of little things we'll put in the agenda, the update for tomorrow.
Did you want to, yeah, was there anything we wanted to share? There was a building committee meeting last Thursday. And was there anything?
Yeah, um, yeah, that's right, Tim. Thanks. And feel free to, you know, to jump in and Bill jump in. The, we did talk about behind Niantic Center and starting that work ahead of time, that, that parking lot area. So refurbishing that. So Chris Lund is on that. We're working there. A little bit of discussion on the Niantic Center roof. And we had a couple of issues, you know, up there. The roof is still in good shape, which is good news because that's an older roof. We didn't replace it, if you recall. And then the Flanders roof as well is still, is still leaking. Brand new roof, but it's still leaking. But we're figuring it out. They're identifying, you know, still where these leaks are coming from. The wind driven rain that's occurred last couple, two storms is getting in vents. So we're still, still work in progress there. But, and there is still money, you know, that has not been used, as we've talked about, that it just won't be, you know, sought after. That's part of, you know, what was available. Kudos again to the building committee. They did a great job and on all of you as well. We got, you know, some, I, I think what we need for the schools, obviously, would have been great to, you know, have a lot more money, but, you know, they're, we, we've done well with what we had.
Okay, all right. Amy, anything else to add?
I don't know. The topics are all so big. I feel like every week it's like, let's talk about grading. Okay, let's talk about. Now, I just wanted, I just wanted to share that I think at some point in a future board meeting, and maybe we send you some artifacts, but our teachers in particular have been doing a really nice job providing administration with just positive artifacts, whether it be from students or parents in regards to what's being achieved. There was some discussion at one point, maybe we should create almost like a documentary type from some of the artifacts. And I think it'd be nice for you as a board to see some examples of some of the feedback and some of the live artifacts that we've gotten. And then I will be providing in the weekly update, the by building analysis of the parent survey. I've posted publicly the whole district results in like an infographic form on the website. But as part of the weekly update, we'll incur, we'll send you per building so that you'll have that as well. And thanks for, thanks for your feedback and thoughts for things moving forward. A lot, lots of good talking points that I jotted down that I'm sure we'll be discussing tomorrow at our 8:00 AM meeting. So thank you.
Good, good. Mariana, anything else?
No, just same, working on budget and trying to figure out if anything we're getting from the state cares act. I know they're releasing some of the information tomorrow to the state. So hopefully we'll get that information. And we're still moving along. I had mentioned time and attendance. So we, Stacy and I are working on that. That's moving along so that we can hopefully still be live in July. We might not have many people here, but we'll, we'll be ready to go when, when we are back.
Okay, good, good. And committee reports, I think you've heard everything about what the FFO has been up to. Anything to add, Eric?
Nope, I think we've covered it all. Thanks.
Okay, good. Board comments and future agenda topics. Anybody want to make a comment or talk about something else to add to the agenda? Eric, did you raise your hand?
I did. I just quickly wanted to thank you, Tim. I, I think you've done a great job at coordinating this meeting. These meetings have actually been really, I think, very well run. And for all of us, I mean, I didn't know how this switch would work, but it, I, I do feel like it's, it's not completely seamless, but I do think we get a lot and appreciate your facilitation in managing all this. So I think it has gone really well and I appreciate that.
Okay, thank, thank you. And it's, and everybody's doing a fantastic job. Jamie?
I'm just going to echo what Eric says. This, this cannot be easy trying to coordinate all of us via Zoom all the time. And also to the administration, I know it can't be easy to get everything coordinated. And I just want to thank you for all your hard work. And I hope you all got some kind of a break last week during the vacation and took some time to just relax and not do the crazy thing that we're all doing right now. So thank you all of you for all your hard work.
Okay, anybody else? Let's see, anybody else? Okay, going once, going twice. Okay, with that, who'd like to make a motion to adjourn?
I would.
Did I hear this? Anybody want to second it?
Somebody second.
I will, Candace will.
Candace did? Okay, okay, okay. And I, I won't, I, I'll let everybody do a thumbs up or say aye.
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 Okay, we are adjourned and thanks, everyone. And we'll be seeing everybody next Monday, so stay tuned.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.